I call the meeting of the Falmouth School Committee to order. Flag's outside. Will you join me? You can see it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I remind everybody that this meeting is being telecast. I'm not sure if it's being actually recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any members of the public who wishes to make an audio/video recording of this open session in the meeting to first notify me as chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Two brief quotes today. First one by Norman Vincent Peale. "Change your thoughts and you change your world." The next one by Milton Berle. See, you get a lot -- just by saying his name.
Sure he didn't steal it from someone else?
He probably does. If opportunity doesn't knock, build a door. All right. First item on the agenda is public comment, public session. Please limit your comments to two minutes. No debate or discussion will be taken on public comment. Committee will take items under advisement. The individual may request an item to be placed on a future agenda. Any public comments? Okay, moving along. Theodora, student advisory board. Nice to have you here.
It's nice to be here. I don't really have much of a report today, but the sophomore class has been working on a few fundraisers, and we have decided to have -- host our freshman and sophomore semi-dance June 9th. And so, next week, we're gonna have some homeroom meetings and get a vote on some themes. So that's being put in place. And also, spring sports are starting up. The girls varsity softball team just won against Mashpee. And yeah, all the other teams are heading into games now. There weren't any other games, but that should be later on this week. And my parent, teachers, I mean, my teacher survey results are in, and we should be ready to present those April 25th.
Great.
That's a trend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Theodora?
Did you get a chance to see the play?
No, I didn't. I was very bummed about that, but a lot of my friends went and said it was amazing.
It was amazing. It was.
Okay, next on the agenda is the VIPS presentation. Tracy, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Hi, everybody. I feel really weird talking to your event. You have the full presentation, so you can look at the screen if you want, or you can just follow along. Just due to the limited agenda, I thought I would be, I'll probably be briefer than the slides. These are more for your reference, because that way it's a complete presentation and it wouldn't bother me. So we'll just skip through some of the slides. You guys, I think, are pretty familiar with the history of VIPS, so I won't get into that slide. Also, I'd like to point out some folks here tonight. Howdy, Geisiger, obviously, in the VIPS office. And I have two board members here, Andrea Thurl, our coach here, and Beth Underhill, our executive committee art professor. So we'll just go through this pretty quickly. The only new thing on sort of the organization page is that we have just hired a Girls Circle program leader, Erin O'Meara, who is a fellow graduate. And she'll be, she was a Women's Studies major in college and really loved the Girls Circle program, read about it in the paper, did a circle with Donna Madison Earls in the fall. So she's gonna be helping us with logistics and coordination next year, which would be great. We'll be able to do far more circles than we have in the past, just because Suzie Hartman and I have been a little overwhelmed by the details. So it'll be great to have her help. So by the numbers, for those of you who were at the dinner, we didn't quite have all the finals for last year, but we had just over 1,000 volunteers. I say official, that means they actually logged at least an hour last school year. Just under 45,000 hours is what we have recorded for them, and 13% of those were student hours. So that's a fairly consistent number for students, but we know that students are doing a lot more community service and volunteer time than they're reporting. So maybe we could work on that together, Theodora, and get kids, we know they volunteer. They take the log sheets all the time. I don't know what they're doing with them, but they're, you know, come the scholarship time, we do see a lot of seniors, actually, all of a sudden coming to be honest with their hours. That's great. Let's see here. What I'm gonna do with the presentation is just break it, a report into the sort of three major cluster areas for the programming that we do. So mentoring is the first program I always like to talk about. That contains several sort of mentoring programs within that umbrella. Our traditional mentoring, which is the one-on-one mentoring program that started back in 1994. We have just over 60 of those matches. I'd like to give a shout-out to Shona Vitelli, our new mentor programs leader. She has been unbelievable at doing recruiting. She's like finding out about all these different coffee groups and neighborhood associations, and she's going and talking about mentoring and having a great response. We just did a joint recruiting session, actually, with the Big Brothers/Big Sisters program at Lee and McGuire's, and had 35 people. And between both our programs, we've gotten many of those people to sign on and be trained as mentors. Something kind of fun that's very unusual, so I'd like to mention it, is that we actually have some mentors waiting for a mentee, which is a really cool thing, because it's usually long lists of students waiting for a mentor. So that's very exciting. Jack's program, the one and only, Jack Zorsky, is going stronger than ever. Right now, between the juniors and the seniors, he's got 28 students. 12 of the seniors, nine have mentors, and of the 16 juniors, 14 are matched with a mentor. The other two, I might add, are working with their parents. So it's like 100% with his junior class, so that's adding. In fact, a lot of them are gearing up for college visits over the April break. The peer mentoring program that we do with Alex Heserian, the guidance office, has 15 students this year. 12 are seniors and three are juniors. And they're matched with, it's actually over 45, but the one-to-ones are 45 students. So what that does, it basically allows us, through working with the adjustment counselors, to serve 45 more students who could benefit by having a mentor. And then they're also, this year, working with some ELL classrooms and some elementary classrooms over at Mullen Hall. And then the Girls Circle program and SHINE. SHINE is what we call Girl Circle here at the Lawrence School. The girls wanted a more grown-up name, so that's an acronym. So they did a focus group and came up with some topics they wanted to hear and renamed themselves the SHINE Group. So right now, there's a 7th and 8th grade group running here at Lawrence School on Wednesdays. And then today was the first day for a 5th and 6th grade group at Moore's Pond. And Wednesday, we had enough kids to do two groups at Moore's Pond, so the next group will start up this Wednesday. Something to, for all of these programs, we do evaluation, so we can share that with any of them. We did a sort of mid-year assessment of the peer mentoring program, where we asked the peer mentors to talk about their experiences and how they felt they were impacting their mentees, what their mentees were getting out of it, and then they themselves, what they thought about being a mentor and what, you know, they've gotten out of that. So I have that data. It's actually really interesting, but in the interest of time, I'd be happy to send it to you if you'd like to see that. The second area for programming is our career preparedness programming. So I put the CAST program under there, and the reason for that, that's our cross-age science teaching program. It's been going on for decades, actually. So that serves every single 3rd grader. This year, we're just wrapping up at Mullen Hall. We always save Mullen Hall for last, so the Lawrence kids can walk over to Mullen Hall. We wait for the good weather. So 273rd graders this year, and we were able to involve 72 8th graders, which is the largest number of 8th graders we've ever had doing it. And that's because they really want to do it, they remember doing it as 3rd graders, and they really love being on the other side of that. And something we've learned over the years when we do the surveys of both 3rd grade teachers and 8th grade students is that a lot of the 8th graders say that they had never really thought about having a career in education, but this program made them think that might be something they might consider. So that's kind of a cool thing. Career Day every year, as you know, Falmouth does it very differently than most schools. We take the kids out into the community all over Falmouth, Bourne, Mashpee, and the base. So this year, we had just over 190 juniors, and it involves, the nice thing about Career Day is it's such a community event. We have our partners, the Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary Club. And the host sites are just fabulous. They don't just go to one place at Hui, they go to six places. You know, they really sort of pull out all the stops, getting the kids to really sort of get a glance at what it's like to have these different careers. And we always try to match kids with their first or second choice. The Career and Community Service Fair is coming up for Lawrence. We'll do that for 6th through 8th graders. It's nice for the 6th graders that like to come over and spend the day here. It's kind of a nice intro. So that serves a lot of kids in one morning. Our High School Speaker Series. So that is, Clipper Time's really given us a nice window of opportunity to bring some outside speakers, where they can talk to small groups of students on different presentation skills and interview skills. We've got a couple of those coming up in preparation for seniors to further senior projects, so give them some sort of tips on how to do some presenting on that. And then, last but not least, is our High School Job Board, which we've kind of moved. It's now located just outside the Student Activities Office, which is a kind of a high traffic area. And I have to tell you, Dr. Aitken, I get these calls in Guidance all the time, some of the jobs up there are pretty impressive. I mean, like $10, $12, $15 an hour, seasonal. Some are actually year-round, part-time jobs or paid internships. So we're actually gonna be working with some of Ryan Weber's students to come up with a commercial to get the kids to check that out. Sadly, a lot of the jobs go unfilled, and I think that's kind of a town thing. We've been talking to some of the employers that are seeing some, you know, a lot of unfilled jobs, which is, so not for lack of trying at the high school. The third category is our Financial Literacy Programming, which has really taken off as an area for VIPS, and a lot of that to Beth Underhill's credit. This is something that dates back to the first Credit for Life Fair held at the high school, sponsored by the Kid Cut 5 and organized by Janet Rocha. It was very apparent that the kids were gonna get out of Falmouth High School with, you know, not enough knowledge for some very basic things, like managing budgets and reality, how much things actually cost, and how much money am I gonna need to make a go of it, and what is the credit score and that kind of thing. So we quickly started working with some community partners and figuring out ways, and we're still adding to this, this is definitely a growing area, of ways to just ramp up. So starting in elementary school, introducing some programming, some concepts, and then building on that all the way through high school. The Junior Achievement Program is a great program, where the volunteers get all the materials for free from the Junior Achievement Program, and they come in and do those with the students. Students really love it. All the way through the Martha's Union Savings Bank Program, we now have over 600 accounts of kids saving as little as a quarter every deposit, or it could be their birthday money or something like that. And so that's very exciting. The Choices Program, big news, debuted this year here at the Lawrence School. Beth put together an amazing team of volunteers. We put out a call for folks who are interested in sort of that financial area, and we got actually more volunteers than we were able to utilize. And it was a pretty good commitment, was two 3-hour training sessions and then two full days of workshops the week of Thanksgiving break. Next year, we're actually gonna expand it from, to add 7th grade. So really excited. Tom Bushy and Mike Feeny and the 8th grade science teachers were, social studies teachers were fabulous to work with, gave us great input. So that's exciting. And then this being Financial Literacy Month, we're planning some surveys over at the high school of staff and students on things like spending habits and concepts that will help us next year add some more Clipper Time talks. And then, of course, the Credit for Life Fair. So partnerships being a key piece of the VIPS story. They still are, they always will be, so these are just some of the partnerships we've had and some of the funding that's so key to helping our programs expand and grow. So being from Hui, my old job, I'm kind of a self-professed research junkie, so I felt like it was time for our board and our group to sort of do some looking inward and find out, what do our constituents think of us? What do our stakeholders know, what do they not know? And what could, and how could we use that information to move forward? Because it's time for us to update our strategic plan. So we were able to raise, I think it took me four different grants, but we got enough money to afford the UMass Dunninghugh Institute folks, very well-known, great group of people that came down and did a series of focus groups. Some of you were on them, thank you, and some interviews. And we got some really, really great input. We wanted to look at what is the current and potential of our community and business partners? How do our stakeholders, how are they engaged in VIPS? What do they know? And what areas, obviously, can we be doing better? So we had 46 participants in our stakeholder focus groups over two days. And then Jill, our researcher, also did a series of some phone interviews in early December. So this is just, there's a 42-page report that I'd be happy to share with you. It's actually a really nicely done document. These are just a couple of the sort of take-home messages that were easy to digest. So based on all that feedback, the general agreement about the role of VIPS was that we are a conduit between our volunteers and the school staff. We facilitate partnerships between the community and the schools, and our role evolves and changes to best meet the current needs. Some of the strengths that were cited in the report are strong leadership. We are, we're staying focused and true to our mission. We have built strong credibility and respect from our stakeholders. We are well-integrated to the schools. A refact, I don't have to re-use, but you have in frame. But essentially, that's good, right? So we're happy about this. But then we started looking into some of the challenges. So this is where the information was so valuable to us, because these are the things that are important to students and community. So she broke these up into categories for us. So these are the challenges that, from the focus groups and interviews, she listed under school and community challenges. So these aren't just VIPS, but these are in our community. Obviously, opioid, alcohol, and drug issues, some financial and economic issues, social, emotional, none of these are super surprising, but high stress and pressure leading to self-harm with child and parent language skills, a large outmigration from Falmouth. And this is a big thing that the Chamber of Commerce is actually working on with the Kid Cut Young Professionals. And then a limited number of business with community partners. What that alludes to is that we're all drawing from the same pot all the time, so there's X number of businesses to tap and to work with, and everybody, every nonprofit in town is tapping into that. Okay, so challenges related to some programming, and VIPS programs specifically. So high demands and time constraints on the staff, inconsistent knowledge about VIPS and volunteering, and that was among both volunteers and also community people. Communications across schools isn't consistent, so what might be one way of delivering information at East Falmouth may not be happening at Moore's Pond. Lack of diversity among volunteers, limited time of teachers to best utilize the services that VIPS has, transportation restrictions, and then restrictions on working with students outside of school hours. So it's a lot to think about as we update our strategic plan, but the board has already had a facilitated person come in and help us sort of sort out, start sorting out some of these areas and where we feel we can make a difference. Obviously, it's gonna, we're gonna continue to work with our partners to do some of those. Some we will leave alone, probably, actually. But most likely, we'll be partnering with people to address them. So the general consensus was that we should remain focused on our mission, to continue the mentoring and prevention work that we're doing, because these are cornerstone programs for some of our most at-risk students. The Financial Literacy and Career Preparedness areas worked, got good reviews from the people. And then, obviously, to continue with our community partnerships and connections. And that's just a quote from one of the participants. So the next steps, we did our board retreat, we've had our subcommittee chairs meet, we've got some tasks that we need to start working on. We've gotta update our strategic plan, which will probably take the next year, I would say. We did give our, the Strategic and Governance Committee looked at the current implementation plan and went through and gave a, basically, a report card to that. So it shows us where we need to do some things better and where we're doing well. And then, following that, we'll update the implementation plan. Last thing I really want to touch on tonight is that the great news is that the support of the school committee and the community in general has kept this program not only strong, but just really sustainable. The funding model, where we're getting support from the district and also grant support, private foundations, and fundraising income, has really been a model that's attracted the attention from a lot of other communities. And these are a few of the communities we've been working with over the last, just, that's like two years. And so that's very exciting. It's great when the phone rings or that we get an email from another district that wants to know more, and we're happy to share that model, because it really can work in most communities. So I guess the take-home message is that this model of funding and a lot, so much in-kind support, obviously, our volunteers contributing all of the time and services in the schools, has allowed VIPS to increase the number of programs where other communities are seeing drastic reductions in what they can offer services. That's it? Happy to take any questions?
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Let me first apologize. I'm sorry that the school committee meeting that you originally scheduled at ended up getting canceled, so that we had to jam you into this. Questions for Tracy?
I have one question about Girl Circle.
Sure.
It starts in 4th grade, is that at every elementary school?
It starts typically in the, for 4th grade, we offer them in the spring, because the girls are starting to get a little anxious about that transition to Moore's Pond. The last couple of years, we had, I think we only ran circles that she took it because of the interest. The problem is we, and again, Erin is gonna help us with this, we need to start scheduling sooner, because there were so many conflicts with after-school activities in the spring. So we think we're actually gonna move those back, so that we're finished by April. That way, when all the spring activities and field trips and all that are starting, we will have that.
Sounds like a fun event for 4th graders to kind of get through the hump of.
Yeah, we've had some great 4th grade circles, so it's, thank you, yeah, that's, it's a good time for them.
Thank you.
Carrie.
And I'm happy to see that you identified these things that came up at our forum last week. A lot of people were talking about stress for teenagers, social-emotional needs, so it's good that, you know, you've mentioned these things.
Yeah, we're actually trying to do a training for some of our mentors, and actually, it could certainly be public, on some coping skills, helping those who work with students to understand and, I don't know, assist students with some suggestions for coping skills.
Bill.
I'm not sure if anyone heard on The Point, the mentor, mentors that were highlighted. When was that?
January.
January? It was like an hour long.
Yeah. You can listen on our website.
Yeah, so you can go on, you can go on The Point.
The Point or our website, too.
On your website, yeah. Is it great?
It was a good one, yeah.
Other questions for Tracy? Again, we can't tell you how valuable and wonderful this program is. Thank you for your hard work, all of you. All of you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know it's been done before, but we went and we completely started over. And as I said at our last school committee meeting, we spent a fair amount of time going over the pros and the cons of either repairing Fuller Field and maintaining it or moving the field. And the vote was unanimous to move the field to the Falmouth High School property. And given that vote and the fact that it was unanimous from the committee, I would recommend that the school committee vote to move the varsity football field to the Falmouth High School property.
Can I get a motion to, for the school committee to, what are we doing? To recommend, I guess, we're still recommending. We can't move it.
Right.
But we can recommend that the process continue to move it. So can I get a motion to, for a recommendation from the school committee to relocate the varsity field to the high school?
Make a motion to do it. If I could add something to what Nancy's.
Just make your motion first.
I'll second.
Discussion, Walter.
Yeah, I'm, I'm involved in some other committees, and I'm getting a lot of skepticism. The most recent one being, I went to my precinct meeting for this, and every one of them keeps asking me, why hasn't the school committee approved of just the general motion to move the field? It sounds like they're not in favor of it. So the perception out there is that we're not in favor of putting that school up to the high school. So I think it's super important. I mean, we can work out the details later, but I think it's super important that we make the motion that works, because as far as I know, we're all in favor of doing it. So without, you know, starting to split hairs or nitpick stuff, I think the motion Nancy put out here is let's all agree that we want to move it, and that will eliminate the skepticism that's out there. There's a lot of it, believe me, there really is.
Well, the motion that's on the floor is a school committee recommendation to move the varsity field to the high school.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
The committee will come up with all the details later.
Understood.
But we need to say that we're in favor of doing it. And again, these people that were at this precinct meeting, these are all people who will eventually have to vote on this, so if they think we're not in favor of it, that doesn't help us.
Further discussion?
So we're talking about recommending that we move the football field, correct?
We move, yes, the, good point of clarification, the football field, not the baseball field, the football field.
Exactly. But wouldn't we look at a multi-use vehicle field?
So if I could speak to that?
Please.
I've been on the Field Subcommittee, I guess is what, I don't want to specifically call it the football field, because I think hopefully, in the metamorphosis of the transition, moving the football program from Gov Fuller Field to a hopefully multipurpose field at the campus of Falmouth High School, there will be a metamorphosis to include other sports in that.
Yes.
So we're, I almost said to you, could we clarify and not call it the varsity field? Because that's what we need to call it right now, but as it transitions down Gifford Street, it's going to evolve hopefully into something else. And I don't want to speak out of turn, because everything still has to be voted on and discussed, but if we are, if, should we as a committee vote to move the existing football program to the high school, there will be a metamorphosis of the, what that field will be used for.
Okay.
Is that fair? Was that?
Yeah, that's fair. I think it.
I would say perhaps.
Perhaps, maybe that's a better.
I think we're not there yet.
Yes, we are not there yet.
The only thing we're asking at this point is that the football program and its field be moved to Falmouth High School. I think what will happen is it will go back to the committee, and the committee will have further discussions about what that's gonna look like.
Right.
And what that entails, and what, you know, so we're not there yet. And I think I was clear in the beginning to say that I took the committee back to ground zero, to really to start over. And so we are gonna be very methodical, and we are going to be, and this is gonna be a very well-thought-out process.
Right.
This is simply step one, and then if this were to happen, then it goes back to the committee, and we'll figure out the other steps.
And I think we agreed at the subcommittee meeting that we're gonna start calling it the multipurpose field, not, but just this motion is to just take the football field away from downtown and make that one of the uses for the multipurpose field.
But I think we keep, the motion is to move the varsity football field to Falmouth High School. And then we will look at other pieces that might come out of that committee at another time. But we need to start, and then we need to go step by step.
I think, I agree with Nancy that we need to start from ground zero, because the town already voted it downwards.
Right.
Multipurpose things.
That's right.
So we still have to start from ground zero, and you would be ground zero football field, and then?
If I may, to further clarify, I'm on the committee also, and just to echo, and just to totally echo what Nancy's saying, this is just moving the varsity football field to the high school. Here.
So I have a question about that, because I heard that you said the program also.
Mm-hmm.
So it's the field and the program.
Mm-hmm.
But we're just saying the field here. Is that, is that in campus?
Because no one's gonna leave campus to go, to go to practice or anything.
So by moving the field, we're moving the program?
The program.
Keep the kids on campus. We want to keep the kids on campus.
I think it's a good umbrella term.
I do, too.
Just to move forward, maybe we could just call it the field or call it the program. Just, I think we should all have one clarity term.
Further questions or discussion?
If I could just back up on that. I'm thinking, just thinking out loud, I'm thinking if we say moving the program to the high school, then it will move into a multipurpose or whatever type of field. So perhaps our motion needs to say moving the program. I'm just thinking out loud.
And I think the committee would be fine with that.
I think you're right.
I think you're fine with that.
I agree. Yep. So can you amend?
So the program is the football program?
The football program.
Okay. So would somebody like to move to amend the original motion to call it the varsity football program?
I'll make a motion to amend.
I'd like to say.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I would like to make a motion to amend the relocation of the, of the football program from the Fuller Field to the high school. from the Fuller Field to the high school. I'd second that.
Hold, hold, please, please, please. So, I think you want to do the program and the field.
The program and the field, yes. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Okay. So it will now be, the school committee is voting to recommend to relocate the varsity football program and field to the high school. So that is, that is a motion to amend, or amend the original...
Right.
So first, so can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion on that? Just the amendment? All in favor of amending the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Good. All right. So now we have a revised motion, which is to vote to recommend relocation of the varsity program and field to the high school. Any further questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Motion carries.
And if we could also note in the minutes, it was a unanimous decision.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Susan.
Sharon's gonna have to watch the tape on that. That was confusing.
Come on, you gotta keep up, Kelly.
We got it right.
That was my first one, though.
All right. Next on the agenda is a first read on the revisions of School Improvement Plan Policy BDFA-E-1. And the second one is Submission and Approval of the School Improvement Plan, which is Policy BDFA-E-2. And I believe that we have these in our packet. Nancy, would you like to...
Sure.
...call out what the revisions are?
They are minor. If you look at School Improvement Plan, that policy, we just took out "and" and put in "then" to the school committee. So if you read that sentence, "The plan shall be written with the advice of the school council and submitted for approval to the superintendent, then to the school committee for review." Cleaned up that language, the plan should be drafted, the rest is the same.
Which goes back to a conversation that we had a couple of months ago about the idea that the approval of the school improvement plans is your responsibility.
Yes.
And not the school committee's. It is only our responsibility to review them.
Correct.
Okay. So that's the change to BDFA-E-1, and a similar change to the second one?
And E-2, yes. And just, please, take a look, we changed the dates.
To bring it in line with the idea that we're getting the school improvement plans early in the year.
First, and then you will get the progress reports in the spring. We flipped those around.
Okay.
So now the policy reflects that. And then, the implementation plan is dependent on the superintendent's approval. At this point, we go on superintendent and the school committee regarding the school improvement plans, the expectations. So, again, they're minor. The biggest one for me was making sure that you were aware of the dates.
This is only a first read, but any questions for Nancy on these?
So I have a question. So if there's something that we find just egregious in improvement, we have, we can field those questions and things of that nature, right?
Absolutely. And the way it was explained to me was if the, if the school committee really has an issue with the school improvement plan, then the superintendent has a problem.
Right.
So, yes.
Any other questions for Nancy? This will come back to us for the April 25 meeting for vote?
For approval, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to act to accept a $5,000 grant from the Cape Cod Foundation for Training in the Calmer Choice Program. So from the Cape Cod Foundation?
Yes.
For training in the Calmer Choice Program.
We are expanding the Calmer Choice Program in the district, and it's a district initiative. And we were granted that $5,000 from the Cape Cod Foundation to help with that process. And I would ask that you approve that donation, please.
Can I get a motion, please, to accept the $5,000 grant from the Cape Cod Foundation to be used for training in the Calmer Choice Program?
Motion to accept the grant, the $5,000 grant for the Calmer Choice Program.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? Kelly?
I just, I think it is so spectacular that this program is experiencing such success in this district. We heard last week about the concerns that parents have about stress and anxiety in their kids, and the health curriculum. And this is an actual thing that we're really doing to try and combat that. And I'm just so happy about it. That's all. Let's take that money.
Thank you.
Leah.
Nancy, how will the $5,000, how is it going to expand? Do you know?
I think it's for training purposes, to continue to train teachers. And as we move through it, if we don't have trainers in certain buildings, we bring people from Calmer Choice in to do the training, train teachers. So there is an expense to it. But at some point, as we move through it, we'll have many of our own staff trained, and we can do it ourselves. That's the goal.
Excellent. So you're building the capacity and sustainability within our school system.
And we're reaching backwards to, to make sure that we're including the little kids.
And what grades get Calmer Choice this year?
Trying to remember, fifth and sixth?
I thought it was more...
And I think fourth, isn't it?
And fourth, we have some in the elementary schools, fourth and third, I believe.
Okay.
So we are moving, again, to expand it.
So I just got a flyer home from, I think, my second grader, talking about Calmer Choice, talking about this exact thing. So I think it might be trickling down even more. So I couldn't be more excited about it.
Any other questions or discussion? Can I get, all in favor of accepting the $5,000 grant from the Cape Cod Foundation for use for training in the Calmer Choice Program? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Motion carries. Thank you very, very much for the Cape Cod Foundation.
Thank you.
All right. Conducting routine business, first one is to approve the minutes from our March 28 meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the March 28 meeting?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from March 28 school committee meeting?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to really thank Sharon for, this was a lot of notes.
It was very well done. Hard work, late night. Thank you.
All in favor of approval of the minutes for the March 28, 2017 school committee meeting?
Actually, the, the, the science fair, one I abstained on that, and it has it as unanimous. The field trip?
Field trip to MIT?
Correct.
Okay. Can I, can I get a motion to approve with that modification, that, we had the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Next is report from the chair. I do not have a report. I don't have anything. Next meeting is the 25th of April. Any reports from any committee members? Leah?
I want to thank the people who did observations. They were really well done. And I really appreciated you using the template. And I just, I thought they were really easy to read, and thank you very much.
And a reminder that...
A reminder, Friday, you need to get those evaluations to me by Friday. And I just have a suggestion, as I was doing your evaluation this weekend. I like to, because I do this, obviously, in my profession, too, I like to look at the overall evaluation and kind of think about where I see Nancy in areas. And then, when I have some questions, that's where I really start diving into some other evidence. And that's just the way that I do it. And, you know, if anyone needs any support in doing this evaluation, you can always contact me. I have some years behind me of doing this.
And they're due on Friday?
Due on Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday, yes. April 7.
All right. Any questions for Leah on that? Any other reports from committee members? Any requests for follow-up information? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? We are adjourned.
How do we do?